So whenever you're ready, John.
Okay, I will call to order the city of Elsworth Plan Board meeting for Wednesday, November 4. Apparently, John Fink is not with us, the chairman. My name is John Delia, Vice Chair, so I will be running the meeting. First order business, it'll be a roll call. Rick Lyons, Wiles, rather than.
Try to get that name right, John. Present.
Rick Wiles.
That's much better, much better.
Nelson Giel.
Here.
Mark Rich.
Here.
Okay, we do have a lines. We have Patrick lines.
Here.
And Molly Friedland.
Here.
Okay, first order business, the adoption of the minutes from the September 2nd, 2020 meeting. Is there any additions or deletions that anybody would like to bring up? And if no one has any additions or deletions, can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept. Sorry.
So moved.
Okay, who made the motion? I can't, I can't see everybody.
I think it was Nelson.
Mark Rich.
Okay, Mark Rich made the motion. Who's seconding?
Rick.
Okay, I'll have to go down through the roll call again. All in favor of Rick Wiles.
Present.
Nelson Giel.
Yes.
Mark Rich.
Yes.
Patrick lines.
Think Molly's first alternate, so I wanted to throw it on that. And I wasn't present.
Molly Friedland.
Yes.
And I'm voting yes. Second order of business is the final plan review.
One, one question before we move off. What about the minutes of the special meeting on October 21?
Whatever. Carrie, I'm guessing they're not done yet.
You'll see those next time.
Fair enough.
They are done, but they weren't on the agenda, so I couldn't, couldn't put them on for tonight. You'll see them in December.
Fair enough.
Okay, next item is the final plan review for major use site development entitled Superior Docs for Superior Realty. And the proposal is to create a 4,000 square foot solar energy farm on a 78 acre property located at 420 Christian Ridge Road, tax map 50 lot 2. All of the subject property is located in the urban zone. I'll just add a comment from the last meeting. Some people were watching and they weren't really familiar with where this was. I mean, we know where it is, but I mean, basically, Superior Docs is located short distance in, on Christian Ridge from 1A, on the right side of the road, just to locate it for anybody who may be watching and is not familiar with where the property is. So somebody here representing Superior Realty.
Andrew McCullough representing Superior Realty.
Okay, Andrew. The floor is all yours.
Okay, thank you. There are no real changes from what we presented to you for, at the special meeting. We did receive a letter from the Natural Areas Program. I believe that a copy was emailed to each of you. We had a botanist go out to review the site to determine if there was any Nantucket shad bush. And there is no Nantucket shad bush in the vicinity of our proposed project. The closest plants that were potentially this Nantucket shad bush were about 300 feet away from the site. And so the Natural Areas Program has signed off on the project. The only other request was to move the title block to the lower right hand corner. And I did that on the final plan that I dropped off at the, at City Hall today. And so the, the plan that has the signature blocks, our signature block at City Hall is in the lower right hand corner. And I believe that was all the only outstanding questions that we had discussed.
Any board members have any questions? Hearing none, I will open a public hearing. If there's anybody watching or wants to email. Is Carrie taking, taking care of that, or who exactly will be fielding emails or phone calls?
Carrie's taking care of the emails.
Okay, I'll just give anybody a minute or two to check in.
Hey, John.
Yeah, go ahead.
There was a, there was a question that we didn't see, I think came through social media last time and might just, I'll, I'll bring it up here. And it had to do with decommissioning for these projects. And the suggestion from the member of the public generally was that we should consider decommissioning when considering these projects. And so I think maybe it's worth noting that at least on the prior larger project, the decommissioning was considered and, and there was quite a lot of planning and detail that went into the plan in that regard. This is a significantly smaller project, but the, the general concept of decommissioning is considered. I think the answer to that gentleman's question last time would have been, the answer or the concept of decommissioning is considered when we look at these projects, especially if they're going to be significantly massive and who should be responsible for that financially in the future. In this case, it's a relatively small, small installation. So I'm not sure really warrants that, that treatment in this case. But it's worth mentioning because I know we've got a much larger solar project coming up a little bit later on the agenda. That's it.
Well, actually, I thought, you know, this project was going to need a decommissioning plan. And then Mike Hany pointed out the difference between standalone projects and projects that are not standalone. And, and basically, this doesn't meet our ordinance to have a decommissioning plan. You know, maybe something, and thinking about it and just talking with Mike about it, I mean, maybe something that we may want to discuss. I mean, changing the ordinance a little, I mean, this is not a big project, but there could possibly be something along this line. It doesn't need to, right now does not need a decommissioning plan, but is significantly larger. So even if it's, you know, for personal use or business use, you know, if a, a business got up to, let's say, 5,000 solar panels in our ordinance, if they're using it for their, for their own personal use, commercial use, like Superior Docs is, that we would not require a decommissioning plan, which may be something we might look at in the future.
So just to give everybody an update, there are no questions and answers in the Zoom webinar itself.
Okay, and I will close the public hearing and if somebody would like to make a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion that we accept the final plan for the, oh, I'm sorry, wrong one. Accept the final plan for the Superior Dock project, the solar project.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I think a true second is it.
Mark Rich, second.
Okay, all in favor, I'll go down through it again. Rick Wiles.
Okay, with me.
Nelson Giel.
Yes.
Mark Rich.
Yes.
Molly Friedland.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the motion is passed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Andrew. The next item on the agenda is preliminary plan review for revision to a previously approved major subdivision plan entitled Denver Way subdivision for Jonathan Bates. Proposal is to divide an 8.5 acre parcel, tax map 58, lot 19-3 into two parcels, creating lot 1, 2 acres, and lot 2, 6.5 acres. All the subject property is located in the urban zone. And just for location purposes, is located on the Bangalore Road, beyond the right hand side of the road, headed north, a little bit before the antique place where motor car used to be. Is there someone here representing Mr. Bates?
Steve Salisbury from Harrick and Salisbury, John Bates.
Okay, Steve, the floor is all yours.
John would like to separate the property so he may put two acres of land around the nine unit apartment building and separate that out from the remaining land. And if you remember back in history, there's a copy in your application as well of a 15 unit multifamily housing project on the six and a half acres. But before we do that, we want to separate out the two acres around the nine Denver Way multifamily housing building. And so I just simply show a two lot subdivision. Even normally, a two lot subdivision wouldn't require planning board review, in this case, because it's been in front of the planning board twice. And you've approved multiple units that are, for the purpose of subdivision bar a subdivision, we have to amend the plan and create this lot division.
Okay, this is pretty much straightforward. Are there any questions? Proceed. I presume, Steve, that you've seen a copy of the TRT report and the three items you would take care of for the final meeting?
You are correct. Yes, I have seen that.
If there's no questions from the members, I'll open this up to a public hearing and give it a minute or so to allow for any comments. You know, I mean, there's not that much to, to this project to discuss. So I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion. And remember, this is just for a preliminary review, so we're just voting on whether the, the application is complete.
I move that we approve the preliminary plan review for revision to the previously approved major subdivision plan entitled Denver Way subdivision for Jonathan Bates. Proposal is to divide the 8.5 parcel, tax max 58, lot 19-3 into two parcels, creating lot 1 of 2 acres and lot 2 of 6.5 acres, all of the subject property being located in the urban zone.
Second.
Okay, so all in favor, Rick Wiles?
Second.
Yes.
Nelson Giel.
Yes.
Mark Rich.
Yes.
Molly Friedland.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Carol, that's Stephen.
Thank you very much. I'll see you next month.
Okay. On to the big one. Preliminary plan review for major use site development entitled Elsworth Solar Project for Elsworth Main 1 LLC. The proposal is to construct 42.3 acre solar energy facility in the 107th parcel located on the Bucksport Road, tax map 38, lot 7 and 8. All of the subject property is located in the rural and dragoon zones. And this is located on the Bucksport Road, beyond the right hand side, headed towards Bucksport, just a little bit past the North Denver Road. Who is representing the Elsworth Solar Project?
Evening, John. My name is Dale Knapp. I'm the company principal with Boyle Associates. We're here representing Con Edison. Greg Carey, actually, with Con Edison is on the meeting here with us this evening. And my colleague here, Chris Byers, a program manager with Boyle, is also here to support conversation regarding the project.
Okay, so I'll turn the floor over to you.
Sure. So we've been obviously interacting with the city for a bit. We've introduced the project as a concept. We've been through the TRT meeting, incorporated some feedback and found some supplemental information for the benefit of city staff as well as the planning board. The project parcel was evaluated. We've conducted formal wetland delineations on the site, frontal pool surveys. We've done some soil work out there. The subject project is large enough to trigger site location permitting. And so we have submitted that to the Maine Department of Environmental Protection. It's been accepted as complete for processing. And that robust volume of background information is available at City Hall if you cared to peruse it. We've included, I think, some letters, some consultation letters from state agencies, historic Natural Areas Program, Maine Fish and Wildlife. We provided some supplemental stormwater calculations and other information. Updated the design, addressed some changes in road width, access, and added a couple of other notes to our plans that were supplemented or submitted after the fact. I guess the project purpose and need, this will be a community solar project. And so the power produced here at this project will be consumed in Maine. Interconnection is fairly easy, three phase roadside, just a few kind of wooden poles, similar to what you'd have for a commercial drop. So this project is one of many that are happening all over the state right now as a result of some of the legislation that was passed during the last session intended to proliferate distributed generation across Maine for the benefit of Maine residents, businesses, municipalities. I don't want to talk on forever about things you may already know, because I know you're familiar to some degree with solar already. So I'd be happy to field questions. We can pull up a schematic. Maybe, Chris, now would be the time to, to pull up the design. If we could share our screen, would that be all right, John?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, please.
So let's pull that up so you can kind of get a little bit of context and then happy to field any questions you might have on a specific topic. All right. Yep. So you can see here Bucksport Road is kind of in the south. The lot had been previously cleared, so we're utilizing an existing access road that enters the site, goes up to a landing. And then there is some minor wetland impact that we need to have to access the footprint of the project area. We have acquired our federal permit that we triggered the need for from the Army Corps of Engineers. And, you know, the, the footprint of the project would be mowed no more than twice a year to address the need to be self-treating as required by Maine DEP. And, you know, again, we sought to reduce and avoid any environmental impact that we could while still, you know, meeting the, the output or the generation targets for the project. Chris, do you have anything to add on design?
I think I would just point out that, you know, we're trying to utilize as much existing roads where possible in the area inside the fence of us. It's, it's pretty far away from the road. I think we measured it maybe approximately 1,200, 1,400 feet, something like that. So we're going to keep a lot of the woods there. And visual impact will be zero from the road as you're driving on Bucksport Road in this location. Maybe just another quick design feature of this is that we intend to plant a conservation seed mix once the project is built and to create established ground cover. And then surrounding the project, there will be an agricultural style fence that is comprised of wooden posts and more of like an ag fencing design that has, it's more of like a deer fence or trying to move away from a chain link.
Hello, any of the members have questions for the gentleman?
Of course.
Oh, certainly. Go ahead.
There was a, somewhere, you know, in the, on the, on the site plan or whatever, I think there's a turnout that's way down into the actual solar array area, okay? And is that for a fire department turnaround? Is it, did I read that correctly or?
It is one of, one of two. And so that is also, there's an equipment pad there. And so there's a small hammerhead, an equipment pad.
Same spot?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I misunderstood. But also, there is an existing landing area by that elbow that will be left in place. So there are actually two locations that would provide an adequate radius for an emergency turnaround.
And is our fire guy okay with this?
No.
Well, okay, then.
One of the things that we're going to need, Chris, is I need to have specific details for that hammerhead T-turn. I need to know the depth of that T-turn, the width, and I need to have the radiuses of that T-turn. If it's not deep enough and if it's not wide enough, we're not going to be able to get an engine in there. So I think I did supply you with a turning information on one of our engines. If you can create a pattern or whatever for that, that'd be fine. But if you can't, then you need to have a 35 foot radius, turning radiuses on those T-turns and at least 50 feet depth on those hammerheads.
I think that the design include distances?
It conforms, so it's a little hard to see. It's a very large site, so we have a lot of little note here. So let me zoom in real quick, Mike. We did receive your notes during the, the technical review team that was provided. And so what we have here is that the two hammerheads that are drawn on the access road conform with a 35 foot radius and the hammerhead itself is 50 feet long.
All right. Can you give me detail of that rather than just a flat drawing like that?
Yeah, we can probably provide like a call out box that would just, you know, make it a little bit easier to see. I know there's a lot of details here, but we certainly can do that.
We could also, I think what he's looking for maybe is just a, a larger schematic showing.
Probably a profile or something along that lines.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, the other thing that we really need is some sort of a turnaround out, just outside of the gate. That way, if we don't have to go all the way in there, you know, we don't, I don't know, there's any place really to turn on the outside of that gate anywhere. Hopefully, you've got room to be able to do that.
So. So there was, I believe, in the supplemental submission, we had identified the, the landing area as a very large, kind of gravelled, open area that would be left in its existing condition for that use. So maybe what we could provide is an updated aerial photo.
Okay.
Included in the packet. I thought we'd submitted that.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, we tried to outline it on the site plan here as well. It's a pretty fine line, so I just highlighted it with a red line as in what's drawn there. So we wanted to sort of show you the size of it, but, you know, I get.
It's, it's, yeah, just maybe we could show it that way. Basically, that area is an existing landing that was gravelled for the purposes of the, of the prior timber harvesting, and we're just going to maintain that existing developed area as it is today on site. So it's a very good size area outside of the gate that could be used for emergency purposes.
Okay, so I guess one of the things we'd need to check is to make sure that that, that, that's compacted enough to where I can get, you know, a pretty heavy fire truck on that stuff without sinking out of sight.
Yep. I can't imagine that a loaded haul truck coming off that site wouldn't be much different in weight. Would a sidewalk help?
Yeah, it might.
Okay.
And along with that, can you, can you scroll up on your map to where the other hammerhead is?
Sure.
Okay, so, so that hammerhead is, you know, kind of into the solar array, but not all the way. Oh, I see. There's another one in the way in the back there?
There's, there's two. So we've got one right here.
Yeah.
At a pad and then another right here.
Okay, so scroll up to the, to the one that's at the top, towards the top of the page.
Sure. I'm going to zoom out a bit now that I've circled.
My question is for Mike, if you look at where that, okay, stop now. If you look at that, the, the, the topmost red circle, is that far enough into the array for your purposes? Or does it need to go further or is that okay or?
I think that's plenty, Rick, because we really, I, the only reason we'd need to get in there is not necessarily for any kind of problems with the array. It would be, you know, if there was any kind of a grass fire or any kind of forest fire in there to try and protect that as best we could. And I think we could probably do that from that location if we had to.
That's, that's the question and the answer. So that's cool. So I'm good with that. Well, hearing no other questions, I have another one then. Where, where, where are, I, I was unclear. I can think it's just because of the scale and how busy it had to get. Where are the gates that would prevent the public from kind of wandering in here and whatever? Or are there any gates? I saw some reference to a gate somewhere, I know.
Yep. So the gate falls just inside. Chris, could you scroll down? It's at the, it's just before the crossing, near the landing area. And so we had discussed, actually, yeah.
So how far into the site is that? That's like 1,000 feet?
Up above. Yes, probably about that.
100. Right after, right at the, right at the fence.
Yep.
I don't know that, that it's a requirement in terms of, you know, that we have a requirement relative to how far back off the road the gate needs to be. But I would suggest that there might be some issues with, with that gate being that far back into the site with, you know, kind of random people coming onto the site. Or is there experiential base there that says that doesn't happen or what? I can imagine snowmobilers going in there and saying, oh, here's a good access point or, you know, stuff like that.
Well, at the very least, what we want to preserve the area when you come off of Bucksport Road, the utility wants to be able to get to their pulse right away. So they're installing their own equipment. So, you know, I think what you're asking about is maybe something beyond that. Typically, on solar projects, they, they will have their gate actually at the fence as opposed to multiple points. I mean, there's got to be one there, right? There has to be a gate that's locked, so that's.
Okay, I get that.
Right, yeah. And to some degree, there, there, this is a lease, a long term lease for the operation of the project. So the underlying land owner does have some control over where, where, you know, where that gate falls. Obviously, they'll work with the developer to identify it. So there is an existing gate. If you've been by the property, there's a gate just behind the access road right next to Bucksport Road already. And so, you know, there may be a possibility that the land owner would like to keep one there in addition to this sort of project gate that, as Chris outlined, it kind of falls within the, the fence that surrounds the project.
Right. Usually, from an emergency services perspective too, we want to kind of give quick access to the front of the project area without having to go through multiple gates.
Okay, if there's a, I, I'm okay with that unless somebody else has other questions.
The only thing I can think of, Chris, is that if there is a gate that is further closer to the Bucksport Road, you're going to have to provide either a Knox lock or something Knox box at that gate as well. Yes, in case for us to get in there. Yep.
Sure. We'd have like a double lock on there, no problem. We did indicate that on here. But anywhere where there's a gate, you obviously would need to have your key.
Yeah, I think the project preference would be to keep it where it's proposed. But, you know, obviously, open to feedback from the planning board. You know the lay of the land locally better than, than we do. But, you know, obviously, open to feedback from the planning board. You know the lay of the land locally better than, than we do.
And I would agree somehow with Rick initially. You know, probably preferably the gate would be closer to the road, but I foresee that in the problems of, you know, the landowner goes through that gate by the road. If there wasn't a gate by the fence, then he didn't drive around all solar panels. So, yeah, I mean, you'd almost have to have two gates, you know, to, to serve that purpose. So, I mean, so I guess the gate at the fence makes a lot more sense than just having one gate out by the Bucksport.
Given that, given that you're showing the gate, you know, kind of on the, to the right of where the, what, I mean, I'm just talking about your, you know, right and left relative to your, your plan here, to the right of, yeah, that one, right, is to the right of the wetlands. If someone were to come in, you know, kind of random planning board members looking at the site or whatever, and they got up all up to that gate, would they have to back, back around then, all the way back to the landing area? Is that the plan?
Yep, yep.
Okay, well, like I said, I'm not sure that we can require you to do one thing or the other, but it's, 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 it seems like it's inviting people to be on the land somehow. But whether it's your responsibility or the, or the actual landowner, the, you know, the landowner. So anyway, just a comment. Where is the, there's a tower out there. This is another topic now. There's a tower out there, a, which would be to the right of the map someplace?
Yep.
Have, is there any problems with interacting with it? I, and I couldn't get a good feel for how far from the property here, the project site, that tower is. Uh, and, and I have no idea whether there'd be any kind of inter, interaction interference between that, that thing and you know, your, your development. Oh, it's the yellow spot there, is it?
Yeah, I don't, it's hard to see on, maybe on your screen, but there is a kind of, behind this opaque layer, we've got, that you can see the road.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, I think that's what you're talking about.
So that's, so how, that's probably three or four hundred feet from the, from the property line?
No, it's more than that. It's probably closer to like, like sixteen hundred feet, yep.
Oh, wow, okay, okay.
I don't, that's a good question, Rick. I don't expect it to have any interference in either direction. Us interfering with them or them interfering with us. This project has a communication device, but it's basically just a cell modem that communicates every few seconds and beams a signal to some server that logged data. And other than that, it's really just an elec, piece of electrical equipment.
Okay.
And, but because of the distance that we are from this cell tower, you know, we don't have any fall considerations of it falling on the project. And I don't see that the cell company would have any issue with our proximity to that.
No, they, these projects aren't interfering with any kind of radio communication. Just as a specific example, in Stanford, right now, they are putting, you know, a very large project in, on and around the runway apron of an, of a federally regulated public airport. And so, you know, they don't, they don't interfere with communications equipment.
Okay. In your, in your, in the, on the drawings that we had, and also on the write-ups, the road was referred to as being eighteen feet wide at one point, twenty feet wide at another point. I mean, just in terms of, you know, referencing the paper in, in the, in the documentation. And then fifteen feet where it crosses the wetland. All I would say is that, you know, the material that you present should be consistent, whether it's eighteen or twenty feet, whichever it is. But it seemed to me that there were, you know, in essence, references to the same stretch of, of road that were different.
Yeah, that was a result of feedback from the TRT meeting. And so our initial supplement was based on the DEP application, which was eighteen.
Okay.
Since then, we have revised our design, and it is now twenty feet.
Okay.
Based on the standards in, in the city of Ellsworth.
Okay.
Narrow, the narrow width of the crossing, we plan to maintain at that small gap.
Okay.
Reduce our direct wetland impact.
Okay, so and when we see the final thing, there'll be consistency there, right?
Um, the response that we submitted did include a consistent twenty-foot wide road except for the crossing.
Yep.
Right, right, except for the crossing, right.
Correct, yeah, and that, and that'll maintain to be different, just to limit the amount of impacts to the.
Where the, where the, you know, the, the runoff coefficients off the road were slightly different than other runoff coefficients in here relative to stormwater. I would assume that, well, I guess the question is, when you did those calculations, did you assume an eighteen-foot wide road or a twenty-foot wide road, and independent of that, does it make any difference at all?
Um, in, in, I guess, you know, in the end, it, it doesn't make a substantive difference.
That's, that's the right word.
Yeah, but we did update our letter, so BH2M is our engineering firm, and those plans. They ran the calc specifically for our response after the TRT meeting.
Okay.
But wide road, there's a lot of information in here.
Yes.
Certainly not, not trying to go through it, but we did update the width. And then also the, is that you were, I think we were at two-point-five, and that wanted to be two-point-seven, so we made that update.
Yep, so we used the larger road width and then the numbers that we received from the TRT meeting uh, in terms of the storm peak runoff flows that we should be calculating for.
Fair enough.
Yep.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, well, one thing I was gonna ask about was the storm waters, and he's got the can't find the exact document, but if I'm not mistaken, two of your AP points have a higher flow post-development than pre-development, is that correct?
Stormwater.
Let me go back to that.
That's the way I read it.
AP two and AP three, there's an increase on the post-development?
Right here. It's true. Yeah, I, I guess, what was, maybe what was your question about? Are you just trying to confirm the information?
Well, basically asking, you know, why there would be a increase off to a basically a neighboring property. I mean, there shouldn't be any increase to a adjoining piece of property.
Well, I think this is the runoff. Does it not calculate for the treatment measures employed within the footprint of the project? So let's hold on. Yeah, so this kind of addresses that change in the stormwater engineer's response.
Actually, it kind of makes some of this difficult to follow, is we receive your information in, in different packets. I mean, right now, I have two different binders that I'm trying to, you know, piece together and, and follow your presentation. You know, I kind of wish everything had been in one binder.
Sure, well, I guess we filed our initial application prior to having the opportunity to talk with the technical review team. And so after that meeting, they provided us with some very helpful recommendations to develop additional materials, you know, based on what they would like us to see based on the city's standards. And so, you know, some of the original materials were tied into our Site Location and Development Act permit that was filed with main DEP. And so there's a very robust stormwater analysis that goes into that to meet the requirements in chapter five hundred. And so we included that in our initial packet, and then, you know, the city uses a slightly different storm depth, rainfall calc. And so we had our storm runner engineer run that, because it's a little bit different than the chapter five hundred standard. And so that second packet addresses that specific, those specific analyses that go into their work that's unique to the city of Ellsworth.
I'll ask some, some other questions, I've got some written down. On the, on the TRT report dated October twenty-eighth, uh, the bullets are not numbered, but like on the first one, emergency operating, dealing with emergency operations plan uh, must be submitted and approved by the fire department, police department, and this is more of a question for staff. Uh, I mean, specifies the planning board is, is, uh, approval of the planning board is not contingent on the emergency operation plan. I somewhat question that. I mean, in section eight twenty-five, it deals with facility operations, maintenance decommissioning, abandonment. I mean, it doesn't specifically say an emergency operations plan, but I just kind of wonder from a staff standpoint, point of view, is, is why the planning board would not have to approve the emergency operations plan as part of this review?
I know we've, I know I've, we've, we've kind of briefly talked, I really haven't had a chance to do any serious talking with Chris and, and, and the rest of them. But putting together a formal operations plan, I'm not sure they could have that ready by the final. And then I'm not sure that the planning board really wants to start going through the emergency operations plan as far as all the contact information and things of that nature. We, you know, if, if you so choose and want it there, that's, that's, that's fine. But I, you know, it's, we, it would be up to the fire chief and police chief to make sure that all that contact information is correct.
It's also something that's typically put together prior to operations. And so site conditions may be different once the project's built. And so you kind of work with what you have to develop that site-specific operations plan in concert with the emergency services that are gonna be implementing it. So as, as, you know, was just said, you know, we can develop some type of a draft, but typically, it's created prior to operations when the project goes, goes live.
You know, first step in that is sharing those plans with the local first responders. That's a standard thing that needs to happen so that they can have the same copy in their records as the actual asset managers do.
Yeah, you know, like we said, basically, you know, that plan needs to be given, even if it's a preliminary plan or a draft plan with contact information prior to any building permits being issued. So that's gonna be before you even start. So we should have some sort of a draft before you folks start.
Well, Mike, I mean, is that something that you would want to put as, as part of the approval? That the emergency operations plan be approved by the police and fire before the building permit is issued? Something that's actually right on the, the plan?
Yeah, we, yes, we can do that. We can have them put that on there.
I think that's totally agreeable.
Makes tons of sense.
It actually might make it a little bit better, because with your collaboration, it actually is a plan that works for you. You know, we don't want to make assumptions about how you like to respond to emergencies. It's probably gonna be, probably gonna work, but I think a collaborative effort, their effort there would be great.
Yep, yep, because, you know, we, we, we've looked at plans before. And rather than them, and we're looking basically for generic information, not specific individuals such as the last one we had, had our fire chief's name and the contact number. Well, our fire chief's not gonna be here after the January eighth, so that name's gonna be obsolete. So we're looking for fire department, police department, sheriff's department, things of that nature, rather than specific information.
Sure, yeah, we've got some drafts that we can even share, Mike, offline, and we'll get your feedback if that meets your needs.
Yep.
Great.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that. It just seemed to be a little discrepancy. Going on the fourth bullet is staff strongly suggests the installation of motion-activated security lighting throughout the development. So again, I'll ask staff, I mean, to what extent, you know, how much security lighting is it that you want, just on the road, throughout the whole solar farm, or, or what?
Well, I think, John, more than anything, it was a suggestion, because there's nowhere where we can require it. It was more along the lines that in the, you know, that's gonna be a fairly dark area out there. And, and it may behoove them to have some sort of either motion detection-type lighting or something along that lines, just to protect the property more than anything.
And also at the gate. So we incorporated the suggestion of the TRT, and now we are specking a motion-activated light to be installed, located at the project access gate to, you know, allow for if lighting there is needed to see the knock box or just to, to see what's happening, the gate, it will be installed there.
Okay, so you're just talking about putting some lights at the gate, is that correct?
Yeah, just like an overhead light, just, it's more of a deterrent, if anything.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm gonna go along with that. I'm down to the twelfth bullet, it says due to poor site distance, consider installing road signs warning commuter traffic of the increased use of the entrance and exit at the development location. I mean, I didn't see any specific estimates of site distance. I mean, I presume that's something that DOT is gonna have to grant as part of their permit?
So a part of the.
I mean, you have.
Go ahead, sorry, I never could.
I was just wondering what the site distance was of that, that location.
Maybe you can figure that out. I think, you know, when we talk about traffic on this project, it's during construction. And so anytime where traffic might need to be halted, flagger force can be used to direct traffic. Slow signs can be installed to say, you know, heavy trucks and entering and exiting, that kind of stuff is pretty standard.
I think that was the intent here, was trucks entering during that narrow window of construction. Once the project is operational, there will be virtually no increase in daily traffic. A, a vehicle, you know, truck might visit it quarterly. So we're not expecting site distances to be an issue, but yes, indeed, we'll have to coordinate with main DOT to acquire. Their, I guess their review gives their.
And then I see somewhere that you are talking to M.DOT about the driveway entrance.
Yep.
Permit or whatever.
Correct.
I mean, because it's, it's their road, and while you might be able to put up something temporary that says, you know, vehicles entering or whatever, you certainly can't put permanent signs, you know, on their road without, you know, without.
The only, yeah, the only permanent signage proposed is a post on the property to identify the street address at the request of the TRT. But the, the access permit is what we will work through with main DOT.
Yeah, and I think we defer to them in this particular case, because it's their road.
Right.
I mean, that's my view at least.
Uh, one other point is, and it's up two notches, that's actually the decommissioning plan. Actually, all the operations, maintenance, and decommissioning bond must be reviewed and approved by the city attorney prior to any local permits being issued. In our previous project, I mean, the decommissioning plan by ordinance needs to be approved by the planning board. In the first project on Route one eighty, where that was our first project, you know, the I don't think it went as well as it could have, because the plan was approved contingent upon the city attorney and, and the developer attorney getting that decommissioning plan agreed to between the lawyers. And there was a delay of a couple of months between the actual planning board approval continued upon the decommissioning plan being approved. And I, I think one bad point that we did on that is when we got a copy of the decommissioning plan, of course, it's legal ease. Patrick would probably understand it a heck of a lot more than the rest of us. And I, I think it, it's something that behooves a board to be able to ask. ask the city attorney questions. So, you know, I just wondered, you know, what the, how the developer is going to go about on this decommissioning plan because I mean, we spent a lot of time when we developed this ordinance to make sure that we had a good decommission plan to, to protect the taxpayers.
Yep, I mean, I'm not sure if I should respond to that, but we did include a copy of the decommissioning plan with our initial application. I guess for, for your review and to be passed along to the city attorney for their review. A lot of the material included in our decommissioning plan is based upon the standards that the main department of protection has sort of put in place for, for projects that trigger the need for site law. So it's, there's a state requirement as well for us to have a decommissioning plan that they approve of. And so, you know, we provided that, a copy of that, and you know, we, I guess, stand ready to receive comments from the city attorney or the planning board on what's been submitted prior.
Well, then, I mean, this one, I did read through the, you know, your plan and the dollar amounts. And like in the previous project, I guess at this point, you know, it's, it's between your lawyer and the city's lawyer and, you know, the planning board. You know, I think at this point would wait to hear from, from the city lawyer as to, okay, is this you know, performance bond, the decommissioning plan, you know, good enough to protect the city? And unfortunately, in the last project, that took a couple of months to happen. So I mean, I don't know. You know, a couple of months away for you folks, you know, is going to be a big impact on your, on your project schedule.
Well, it seems to me that this is something that, that falls within, I mean, I agree that we should have one and we have to approve it and all that. But it seems to me that this is something that can be facilitated by, by city staff and getting these two attorneys together, ours and theirs, and just move forward with it. And it, and it has to be, and we have to have that resolution by the time of the you know, the next phase of approval by the planning board.
I'll talk to Kerry tomorrow and we'll get that sent down to Ed Barron and have him take a look at it.
That was a great answer.
Yeah, I, I think everybody would like it that way, Dwight. So with the final, you know, we can have the document, we can have an opinion from, from Ed as to whether he feels it's good instead of doing it the way we did last time. And, and the ball getting bounced back and forth across the net between lawyers for a couple of months.
No, not a problem. I agree. I agree, John.
Okay. That was pretty much it for my questions, although I did mention, I guess it was at the special meeting we had, that I thought it'd be a good idea for John Whedon to participate in this, but I don't see that he has some I think considering his, his role in the city protecting Branch Lake, you know, that may be a concern to, you know, some, some people in the city as to whether, you know, there's going to be any impact on the lake. It doesn't appear to, but I'd rather hear that from an expert, so to speak. I guess that's more up to city staff than, than anybody.
Chris, do you have, do you have the exhibit and the representative images? Is that something you can display? We've got a few viewers online.
Yep, hang on a second.
While you're looking for that, my, my thoughts here, I don't know, we've done enough of these that we have like a recognized frequently asked questions about solar projects. Yeah, but there's a couple of things that, that seem to tend to come up. The, the small impervious area because of the, the minimal ground penetrations of the, of the posts. In a previous project, there was some interest in seeing those, but I don't think we actually had images available. So if you can, if you can get yours, that'd be great. And the, it, it may not always be obvious or assumed, but nothing is paved under these, under these solar installations, at least the way that you guys are proposing them. So I think it's good for folks to, to see this and understand.
Sure. Yeah, no, they're, they're not
And not like a parking lot.
Yeah, no, they're not ballasted, they're not impervious. There will be grass under all these panels, you know, the only impervious really will be the short addition to the access road from the landing area. And then, you know, these, these driven piles. So, yep, so you maybe scroll back up, Chris.
Sure.
So yeah, if you can see these top images show the driven piles and then the racking placed on them, you know, one of the benefits of these fixed facilities is they don't require tremendous amount of ground disturbance or grading of a site. And so you kind of use the, the land as it lies. So that's one of the components of site selection that makes this location optimal for installation. And then below these next two photos here, you can see sort of the grassy area with the, with the finished panels, conduit buried shallow connecting them. And then the, the agricultural fence Chris was discussing there is on, on the right side of the image.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I just wanted the public to get a chance to take a look at those two.
Sure. Sure. And they're, they're not incredibly tall either. Eight to 10 feet sort of maximum height above ground. They can conform, as we noted, to, to some moderate topography. And, you know, based on the position of this project and the trees that will remain around it, you'll be really hard pressed to see it from anywhere except the gate at the front.
I remember correctly, you said this area would be mowed twice a year, is that right?
No more than twice a year, that's correct.
Okay, I mean, if these are representative panels you're going to put up, I mean, some of those panels are quite close to the ground, but you're still able to mow enough so vegetation doesn't interfere with panels themselves?
Yeah, so the drip edge, the bottom edge of the panel is probably going to be about three feet from the ground at these facilities. So we're going to, again, try and plant, it's a DEP requirement that we're not allowed to mow more than twice a year. So we're going to seek to establish kind of a fescue conservation mix that's not going to grow up to a height where it's going to cause a problem for project operation.
While we're looking at those pictures, can you scroll to the, you know, the box sort of looking thing? That guy?
Yep.
So are there any problems with security of, of, of that sort of installation? And again, I mean, this is not something that, that we might necessarily, you know, have purview over, but you know, I mean, this is kind of an isolated location, you know, way back off the road and so forth. I mean, it, it looks like if I was a thief of sorts, that there might be some good stuff in there, right?
Right.
Do we have any kind of security or, you know?
Yeah, there's, um, once people that are assigned to work on this project are given keys that open up all these cabinets which are locked. And they will either have a padlock on them or an integrated lock into the enclosures. So, you know, there's, there's multiple forms of security that are iterative.
They also fall inside the fence as well, which is an additional deterrent. And I think, you know, it's, they're not, they're kind of similar to a substation in terms of interest. Obviously, they're a little bit further back off the road, but, you know, we don't see a lot of, even at remote substations, a lot of issues with, with vandalism. So it is, you know, it is a power plant. So those fences are not just there to deter burglars, they're there for safety purposes as well. For the, the national electric code requires it. So it's kind of dual purpose.
And your, in your experience, I mean, this sort of installation with the gates and the fences and all that has been adequate for safety and security and all that?
These have, these are being installed all over New England and, you know, we here in Maine are, you know, a little behind sort of the solar revolution. And so, you know, we've seen them installed in Vermont and Massachusetts for a, a long time. And they don't have tremendous amount of issues with, with vandalism or, or thievery.
Yeah, it's, you know, it keeps the honest thieves out, you know, it's not thief proof, but it keeps them out.
What, what, what did you just say?
There were a bunch of honest thieves there, which I find like fascinating, actually.
Yeah, it's the ones that walk by and they say, hey, maybe I should go in there. Ah, that's probably going to kill me if I go in there. So then they stay away.
Thanks for that.
Yeah, no, it's, I, I, Rick, I've, I've been building projects and developing them for over 10 years. And I can't think of any major incidents where we've had, you know, theft or a burglar or even just people messing with stuff, so.
Rick, I think if they get in there and start messing with stuff, you're probably going to find them laying there when you come in.
Right, yeah.
Anything, so.
I get that. It's easy to keep track of them then.
Yes, correct.
See, honest thieves, all right.
This, yeah, I like this, this is good. Yeah. Just, and, well, I guess while we're on this picture, it's kind of a helpful image. This is a cabinet that, you know, has a lot of switchgear in it. There's a lot of redundant electrical protective features to this. So, you know, from a safety standpoint, people say, well, what about lightning? What happens if there's a surge? What if the grid has a surge? There are protective features built into this, just like in your home or in any, any commercial building that are designed to shut off for safety reasons. So if the grid goes out, this project also turns off itself so that it doesn't shock some linemen working down the, down the street. And that's what you're seeing here in these cabinets. The smaller enclosures are the monitoring system where that little cell modem is in there and you can plug USB in, you can download the data. It's a pretty slick little feature for that kind of all weather station that's installed to help measure what's going on on site.
It's this, it's this component here that has the communication or cell communications to you folks within this.
Actually, it's in the bottom one in this picture. This is a project that I built and it's a, you know, it's tiny, it's, it's about five inches by five inches and it just clicks into some din rail. And you pay a Verizon bill every month and it's just a quick little zero and one data signal.
Yep.
I think it would be helpful for, for any of the public who's watching, if you could go through some of your photographs that you took of, you know, whether these panels will be visible from the lake. I think that would maybe be of interest to, to some people, especially the one I guess it's a debit six D that
Yes.
A sliver of it possibly being, I think, I think there's, you know, probably concern out there as people boat on Branch Lake or, or even, you know, from some camps and stuff that that these panels will be visible. Maybe we could go through that for a while.
You have the view shed analysis? I think that's the first, yeah, so go back up.
Yep.
Yeah, is this the, yeah. So the view shed map that you can see here on your screen is where the project could potentially be visible from. And so you see up in the, the upper left-hand corner, there are a couple of small purple streaks. Now, what this model does is it is a, it's a, it's a three dimensional model that they develop based on the height of the panels and then sort of the, the, the topography. So they run a very conservative computer analysis to see where it could be visible from. Now, as you can see in there, the narrative of their report, that was included in our application as well as the state application. The, the distance and the intervening vegetation will prevent visibility of the project to sort of the user or the passerby. So this is a worst case commuter, computer model scenario based on a three dimensional model. So, you know, I think their results pretty definitively show that you won't be able to see the project from the pond.
I thought that was a really slick analysis, by the way.
If I'm not mistaken, the closer you get to the project on the lake, the less you're going to see of it. You have to be that five miles away.
You will not be able to see it. So the intervening vegetation as you get closer, as well as the elevation, means you, you couldn't see it.
Correct.
Here, I mean, out here at this distance, it will be impossible for anyone to pick this out of the landscape.
Yeah, and looking, looking at your picture and looking at that, I think the only reason that I, you would even maybe able to pick it out is because of the cell phone tower that sits right there in that picture.
That's right.
It's the only landmark that you see.
No, it would be virtually, I think the words they used were indiscernible. You would not be able to see it. To see this specific project from anywhere.
Yep.
I'm just kind of curious, the, all the locations that you use to take pictures of them, like some were kind of, I mean, like from State Street in town and some of those locations that you said, okay, you know, you can't see the project from there. Be like, why would anybody think that you could possibly see this project from downtown Ellsworth or Main Street?
Well, some of it is, some of it's tied into a site location standard. And so they have to identify within a three mile radius, any like significant resource of historical value. And so obviously downtown Ellsworth has some historical value, so they have to visit that area and prove to the main DEP and the main historic preservation commission that there is no unreasonable adverse impact associated with this project within that three mile area of potential effect. And so even if there's no chance they could ever see it, if it falls within that three mile area of potential effect that surrounds the project, they have to analyze it to meet the site law standard.
Interesting.
Okay.
Wow.
I have another question for staff, I guess just kind of cutting back to stormwater. Are we considering asking the developer to do a peer review on the stormwater?
I know it's this time, John. If you look at some, a couple of areas were up, a couple of areas were low. Overall, because it's water in a wetland, I'm not so concerned about it. So I wouldn't recommend doing a peer review for this. It's a small project.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from board members?
I, I have one final question. I, I apologize. The, you know, the checklist, the infamous, now, now infamous checklist that we get on these projects. Item 42, and I don't know whether the developer has this or not, but it says, but the, but the the question has to do with the dimension slash height slash location and orientation of existing structures. And what our staff has said is that this is incomplete. There are no existing structures on this site, are there?
No.
Well, actually, there's a small barn.
Oh, really?
Yeah, right down here in the corner.
Oh, okay.
Yep. We had answered that.
I, I think, I, my own opinion, just my opinion, showing that footprint, I think, is enough evidence. I don't see where we need elevations of a historic barn, well, nonhistoric barn.
That's certainly fine with me.
Oh, historic structures. Oh, okay. Oh, it's, it's asking for that?
I think, are you really, is that regarding historic structures or just any?
No, no, just any structure.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I think there was a nuance to it because it's outside of our project area, but it's on the parcel. So you can provide that information, but it's pretty far away as well.
Well, I, I'm with Dwight in the sense that if this is the only structure, this little square thing down here in the corner, I'm personally not real concerned about it.
Yeah, I, I've been to the site a few times and I never even saw it. Sorry.
You're just not observant, though.
Does he be an honest criminal or whatever he said?
Yeah, there you go.
I like Rick.
Yeah.
So I have, I have one, one question, Chris, for you is, is this. I'm looking at Plan C dash 20 of August 13th, 2020. And I'm, along the road, along the road length, it shows turnout buffers. Are you familiar with that?
Yeah.
Are those, are those existing right now? Because there's like three, there's three, there's about five turnout buffers in there right at the moment. Are, what, what are those?
So those are, sorry, yes.
I think you're talking about, yeah, you're talking about this right here.
Yeah.
The gray guy, yes.
Right, and they go all the way in, in fact, they're right in your array field. There's
That's right.
Two of them right in the array field.
Yeah, so those are stormwater treatment. And they will be, that's a component of the DEP permanent application. And so those will be yeah, those are, those are part of the, the treatment measures that will ultimately be a condition of the main DEP permit.
Yeah, need to be de-structured and protected.
Yeah, need to be restricted and protected.
Is that common terminology that they use to call them turnouts?
Uh, buffers is the, is the term.
I, I just want to break, if you, I'm a traffic guy and turnouts are, are different than what you have here. So.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I was thinking it was a place for me to turn my truck out off the road.
Oh, I see. Gotcha. Yeah. Well, there's, you know, there's, they also typically will connect to a level spreader. And so they're kind of turning out the water into the level spreader so it can dis. Yep, I think ditch turnout is pretty common stormwater.
Is it? Okay.
Especially, well, especially when it's, it's, you're dealing with vegetated treatment. So a lot of times you may, you know, you're dealing with more of a hardscape. And so you're dealing with rock line channels, detention basins and that type of thing. These are very low impact projects. And so we're treating them with primarily vegetation that reduces the velocity of the stormwater and infiltrates it straight into the soil. And so the ditch turnouts are most useful for that as they take some of that stormwater flow, put it into a grassy, grassy swale. Slow it down, sediment drops, and that water goes right into the soil where it's best treated. Yeah, we don't need a basin.
Good answer.
Okay, it clears that up for me.
Actually, I have one more question. It's more, it's not really a review question, it's more of a general interest question for me. But in reviewing the parcels, I know that both of these lots are in tree growth. And this is something that the tax assessment will obviously deal with. I mean, does this project result in these lots being removed from tree growth?
A portion of them, yes. And a penalty would be paid.
Okay, so, so basically the, the front half of the property would remain in tree growth and approximately the back half would be removed from tree growth.
Yep, the, the footprint of the project would be removed in that compensatory payment made.
And would you remove the small portion beyond the fence? I guess it'd be to the north.
Nope, it would be just sort of the, the limit of disturbance we show here, kind of around the fence line. Now you highlight that. Yeah. So it's just out that area right there. Yep.
So technically, I mean, somebody could go between the fence line and the property line to harvest the back portion of the.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Are there any other questions from board members? Let me open this to a public hearing and see if anybody from the public has any questions or comments.
There's been no questions or comment from the Zoom chat yet so far.
What was that again, Mike?
Uh, there has been no questions or comment on this, in Zoom chat so far.
Okay. Uh, I mean, perhaps Dwight, where John Whedon is not here, I mean, perhaps a little discussion of whether you feel there's any impact on Branch Lake from this, from this project, you know, whether.
I think, John, I think John Whedon was more interested in reinforcing requirements for erosion control and sedimentation. And I know, I believe John put together a memo. I don't know if coffee got you folks today. And it's just highlighting his concerns with the erosion control. I would imagine when the project starts, Reggie Winslow will have John out there keeping an eye on it. I think what the distance away is enough, but there's no sense in flooding that wetland with the result in erosion if, you know, because there's an error made in, in the construction part of it. So the city will just keep an eye on this construction takes place. I think John will be fine with that.
I also note the location of this and the location of the water treatment plant. I mean, the, this location, if any water did get to Branch Lake is actually downstream of a water treatment plant. So I mean, there'd be no, I wouldn't foresee any impact on, you know, the treatment of the water because of this project. If, if, you know, water happened to get from this lot to Branch Lake.
No.
Uh, so I will close the public hearing and I will ask for board members and any other additional questions from the board members.
Just following up on the drinking water, is it going to be required that quarterly site inspections happen?
I don't.
So I can actually, so John Whedon was unable to connect in tonight. He has actually asked me to read his comments, which I can certainly forward out to everybody tomorrow. But so in regards to the two TRT items, the one that you mentioned, Molly, in regards to the quarterly site inspections. His, his concern, so he stated here, the water department realizes that we cannot require inspections. We believe, however, that the quarterly electrical inspections, which were mentioned by the applicant's representative to be performed by their local staff could be a very valuable tool. We suggest as a condition of approval, the inclusion of city staff during these quarterly inspections in order to document the condition of temporary erosion and sediment control until the meadow stormwater treatment buffer is fully functional, since this meadow does not presently exist on site. That next comment, which, which is in regards to the deed restrictions, which was also included on the TRT report. What we suggest as a condition of approval, the inclusion of a city interest in the long-term presence of the forested stormwater treatment buffers. Since these forested buffers exist only as long as the forest is in them is intact.
So you said this was, this was a memo from, from John?
Just one.
He, he was he was going to join us tonight, but he was unable to get connected. He reached out and asked me to read that. Unfortunately, I don't have any answers to any questions that you guys might have in regards to it.
I have two quick, two quick comments.
He's basically going, yeah, sorry.
If we could. So just to clarify, there are no deed restricted forested buffers within the footprint of the project area or adjacent to it. It is a self-treating within the facility itself. And then beyond that, these are vegetated buffers. They will be deed restricted as required by main DEP. But they will be essentially kind of meadow grasses, not woody vegetation. And then I think that in terms of the quarterly inspection, to have someone join the, the project representative may be very challenging. I think that it's possible they could, we could provide you with a copy of sort of what they'd be looking for in their report and a copy of their inspection could be provided to the city. I think that the key would be to have someone observe during the establishment of that meadow buffer that he referenced. Once that, those meadow grasses are established, you know, for the, the life, the lifespan of the project operationally, there will be very little change out there. So quarterly might be, you know, a bit much. But yeah, we're happy to kind of, go ahead. Yeah, I think the other thing too Dale is that the, the DEP has stringent requirements on what our permit conditions are. So we're not just bound by what we intend to do. If DEP is holding us to all of the, the conditions that they've put forth, once they approve that the project. Yeah, but understanding that you guys want to see what's happening out here. I think we're, we're definitely open to that. There will be probably first party inspection, you know, during the operation. So we could provide, you know, reporting or documentation, photos of, of compliance with the DEP. That's managed practices and erosion control standards. And then obviously, you know, inspections could, could occur with city staff as well during that process. John can definitely coordinate during the construction. He'll be curious, I think. I think a lot of this probably just stems from curiosity and wanting information. So we can be pretty open book and allow him to come on site, see what's happening and even maybe a few months after it's planted, just to see how it's established. Yeah, once those grasses are up, it's going to be pretty boring out there.
That's the.
Go ahead, Molly.
Just wondering, the meadow you mentioned earlier will be planted with a fescue conservation mix. Is that Maine specific native grasses?
Yep. So we follow a spec sheet based on, well, DOT has got some guidelines. Typically, we use a mix that's produced by New England wetland plants that is used in restoration and mitigation projects. We find that it takes really well. It has some, some wildflowers in it and it creates a really nice meadow under these. I think the soil out there is, is pretty healthy. So it'll establish itself fairly quickly.
One thing along the lines of John, John's memo, I would suggest that staff and the developer get together and discuss his memo as to what's doable, what's possible, and perhaps include that on the site plan for, for for acceptance.
Now, we can do that, John.
Okay, appreciate it. Any other board members have any questions? If not, is, this is a preliminary plan. We're voting on whether the plan is complete. Is there a motion to that effect?
Well, I wanted to give someone else a turn, but gonna have to jump in here, I guess. And, and the motion is to find that the preliminary plan is, preliminary plan application is complete. This is for a major use site development entitled Ellsworth Solar Project for Ellsworth, Maine. Comma, one comma LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who was that, Mark?
Mark.
Okay, let's go through the roll. Rick Lyles.
I'm good. Yes.
Nelson Gill.
Yes.
Mark Rich.
Yes.
Molly Friedland.
Yep.
And I vote yes. Motion has been approved. That is the end of the agenda. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, that was really one of the better presentations we've seen. So I appreciate your forthrightness and the answers and so forth.
That's really kind of. No, we really appreciate that, Rick. Thanks for the compliment. And you know, the TRT committee kind of set us up for success here by providing us with a lot of background, kind of getting us ready for this meeting. So a lot of credit to them as well. Yeah, kudos to Kerry on that, on organizing that.
I'll look, I'll look forward to talking with both of you sometime soon.
Yeah, yeah, Mike, if you want to do a site walk out there, just, you know, like we talked about, we're, we're open to that and any of you as well included.
You. Sounds good.
I think we stepped on a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of you have a say on that.
Hi.
Good night.
Have a nice night.
Thank you.